Good evening and welcome to the August 14, 2025, meeting of the Abington Township Board of Commissioners. Ma'am, roll call, please.
Commissioners Brodsky, Rothman.
Here.
De Placido.
Here.
Laney Martin, Brown, Weingrad.
Here.
Henry.
Here.
Zappone. Young Garth.
Here.
Spiegelman.
Here.
Bowe, Schreiber.
Here.
Bowman, Vice President Beatty.
Here.
President Hecker.
Here. Thank you. Please note that Commissioners Brodsky, Laney Martin, Brown, Zappone, Bowe, and Bowman are excused this evening. Oh, is it, is he on?
Zappone's on.
Oh, Commissioner Zappone is with us online. Thank you. The rest are excused. May we rise for the Pledge of Allegiance.
Pledge of Allegiance to the flag of the United States of America and to the Republic which stands one nation, under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all.
Not good. Good evening. So I have one announcement this evening, and we have one brief presentation in the Board President, the Board President Announcement Section. The announcement is that following the conclusion of tonight's voting meeting and working session, the Board of Commissioners will be holding an executive session to discuss a legal matter. And with that, I will turn this over to Ms. Gallagher, who is here to represent the Shade Tree Commission.
Good evening.
Okay, you're not Ms. Gallagher. Okay. Got it.
Good evening.
Good evening. Welcome.
Thank you. My name is John Kennedy, and together with Trish Gallagher, we share the duties of the Shade Tree Commission's Chair Position. I'm here tonight to present the annual report as Trish is traveling. Just go ahead and guess I can. So just taking a moment to introduce who the Shade Tree Commission is and remind all of our mission. We seek to preserve and enhance Abington's urban forest and the essential ecosystem services that trees uniquely provide. And to divine, define urban forests, they are systems of trees and other vegetation and water within the urban area. They are a dynamic green infrastructure that provide environment, environmental, economic, and social benefits, which collectively are called ecosystem services. So that's, I wanted to get that part out of the way because that's the, that's the kind of the basis of what, why we do what we do. I want to also mention to you and just remind everybody that Shade Tree Commission reached the 50-year milestone this year, originally established in 1975. That's something to, to be certainly very proud of.
Yes, for sure.
Later in the year, we'll be advertising a celebration event that you'll be hearing about. I do want to also point out our membership. We have five appointed Commissioners and an additional cadre of associate members. Several are listed there. I did want to just point out also that this evening Travis D'Onofrio has joined me this evening. He's the latest Commissioner to have been appointed. So going right over into budget. We've had budget increases over the past several years that have been largely focused on the implementation of the Master Tree Action Plan, developing pilot projects to help the township better manage our natural areas. Next year, we anticipate our budget request to decrease as the operating expense for some of these pilot projects moves to the Parks and Recreation Department's budget. And just to take a minute and, and highlight some of the activities and the pilot projects. The first one I want to mention is our Arborist. We assist, we assisted the township, and together we worked to hire a certified consulting Arborist, which we did in August of '24. For the Shade Tree Commission, he is providing the needed expertise to help us realize this Master of Tree Action Plan. In addition to his working with Shade Tree Commission, he is also being utilized by many township departments. And together with township staff, we continue to fine tune the process for utilizing his services. The next one to mention is the proposed ordinance. The proposed ordinance from the Master Tree Action Plan has been reviewed by the consulting Arborist, as well as the township staff. It is currently being reviewed by the Solicitor, and it is anticipated to go to the Board of Commissioners Working Group within the next few months. I want to make mention of a project which we're working on right now. It was part of our 2025 budget, and it's an invasive plant management plan. As you are no doubt aware, that all of our parks and natural areas are under heavy pressure from invasive plants. Last year, we requested funding to develop an invasive plant management plan, and this project is currently underway and will provide a blueprint for managing invasive plants throughout the township. When it's complete, the township can apply for an implementation grant from the Pennsylvania Department of Conservation and Natural Resources. Our native plant gardens, hopefully many of you have seen them over in, at Roslin Park. Many of our township parks have large expanses of lawn that require constant upkeep. The project, this project involves converting sections of park lawns into native tree and plant gardens that will require little maintenance and reducing lawn care costs. They also provide a beautiful space for the public to enjoy, and again, they're adding to those services, those ecosystem services, by providing wildlife habitat to sustain our, our ecosystems. And finally, on this slide, just to talk a little bit briefly about the Pennsylvania Outdoor Corps. This is something that we were involved with last year. It's sponsored by the DCNR. It's a, it's a project that provides young adults with workers to steward parks and natural areas. Last year, we had a crew remove invasive plants and replanted areas in several parks and natural areas. And later in, towards the end of September, we'll be doing this again, and they'll actually just be continuing the work that we began last year. So just moving along, our next slide here, just to talk about our ongoing activities. These are things that we do on a regular basis, and just very briefly, there's quite a few things there on that list, but I just want to highlight, you know, to get, that we participate on behalf of the township. These, all of these items are items that we're all really involved with together. And as a result of those, those activities, we logged over 1,600 community service hours in 2024 and planted over 100 trees in the parks and natural areas. And there's lots more there. Just want to highlight particularly the tree giveaway, very briefly. Anyone who's been involved, and many of you have stopped by to see how things are going when, when we're doing this, anyone involved with the tree giveaway will attest to how popular the program is. To date, we have given away 2,000 trees in the township, and we will be adding another 300 later in October. So it's really, really has worked out great. I just, it's important just to take a moment and kind of what we call a renewed call to action. All of the things that we're doing are all related largely within the Master Tree Action Plan, but just speaking specifically about why we're doing this or why we had the Master Tree Action Plan, and it's our, our tree canopy is in decline. Canopy loss has continued to accelerate since the 2017 data that we included in our, our project, really because of the trees lost to, I mean, two things in particular, which we hear about all the time, are invasive insects and worsening storms, which we've felt this year for sure. Our canopy distribution is, continues to be inequitable, and we, we know that this matters because we need trees for ecosystems like managing stormwater, the reduce, reducing the flooding, improving the water quality, and something we hear about a lot now with the heat we've been experiencing, but reducing urban heat island effects. If you haven't seen recently, our story map on our, our, the webpage for the Shade Tree Commission, it's titled, "Our Urban Forest: A Call to Action." I would invite you to revisit there and go through it again. It's, I just did that the other day, and it's, it's just as relevant and important. It was put up on the website about four years ago, five years ago. Just moving right along, speaking about our Master Tree Action Plan specifically, the Township Master Tree Action Plan provides guidance on how to protect and grow our urban forest. Some of the steps we have taken in the past few years to implement it include, we have them listed here, but it's the free tree giveaways. It's the park tree plantings, the native plant gardens for park stewardship. These are all items that were in our action, our Master Tree Action Plan. Hiring the consulting Arborist was a key point. The proposed tree preservation, protection, and removal ordinance that has been, that's now with the Solicitor and, and hopefully will be in the hands of you folks soon. Invasive plants management plan, which as I mentioned is underway right now, another critical step to take to help our urban tree canopy. So just talking about the ordinance briefly, it's, it's listed here, some of the things, but our existing tree ordinance information we know is outdated and it contains gaps. And this proposed tree ordinance reflects current national standards. So the, the whole process of this was to look at best practices, to look at our local, our, our, our local communities similar to us and nationally, and what, what have they done and adopt really the best practices from those municipalities. And finally, just to, just to wrap up here, in collaboration with the township staff and volunteers, the State Tree Commission, we believe, has made significant progress in stewarding and growing our urban forest. I always want to make a point at any time when we have a microphone to talk about volunteerism and all of the fantastic people that do volunteer with us on a regular basis and sometimes occasionally, but we are always looking for new volunteers. And the great way to do that is to just go to the Shade Tree Commission page on the township website, and there is a button right there that says Volunteer and Newsletter Sign Up. So you can do both at the same time. Thank you for your time.
Thank you, both you and Ms. Gallagher for.
Yes.
Co-chairs and your members and associates for the important work that you do and the time that you put in.
Thank you.
The tree, tree giveaway, I mean, the uptake on that has been unbelievable in the last several years, so we'll happily help you to continue that program for sure.
Thank you for continuing to fund it. It's important.
Our pleasure.
Appreciate it.
Thank you very much, sir. Thanks for coming out.
President Hecker.
Yeah, Commissioner Zappone.
Any questions or?
Just, no, 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 just, just, I want to make a quick statement. I've been called in back to work on an emergency, so I'll be with my crews in Center City, under the tunnel, 95 North and South Delaware Avenue, so I may come in and out. Reception is not good under the tunnel.
Understood.
Just so you know, in case I cut in and cut out.
Thanks, Dennis.
Okay, thank you.
Yep. Commissioner Spiegelman.
Any questions for me? I'm assuming.
I do have a question.
Oh, you do.
First of all, stay safe, Dennis.
Thank you.
Thank you, John.
So we have two questions. Is this up on, up on our website, or is it about to be?
It will be.
Okay.
Yeah, I think we'll, right after this, we'll have it, you know, by tomorrow, next day.
And this is a quick question, not a, not a gotcha question at all. Obviously, you know, you know, in the, in the, the long and, and very thoughtful process of creating the, the tree ordinance, and by the way, I'm so excited that it's going to be coming to us pretty soon, looking for, been looking forward to that for a while. Obviously, so, so much of that is reaction to the limits, the township's current limits as far as authority over trees, especially trees on private property, particularly trees on private property. Is this ordinance going to cover issues like dead trees on private property and give the township any authority over that? Because I know that's something I probably all of us get. I get a lot of, a lot of concerns from folks about like a dead tree, you know, threatening their house but rooted on a neighbor's property. Is, is any of that covered? Didn't really, just a curiosity, not a.
Yeah, yeah, and I, and it would be hard for me to say specific, you know, without the document with me, but to, to speak specifically about how it's arranged. It's arranged primarily to look at trees all over the township, but when you're talking about on a, on a, on private property, you know, the removal of trees and the replacement of trees is what this is aimed at. So it's not so, it's not just about removing trees, you know, so we're, people know, we know people need to remove trees for various reasons, and there's, would be nothing in there to, for instance, obstruct anybody from being able to remove a tree, particularly if it's diseased or dying. There, there are other parts of, of the ordinance, I believe, that do speak more specifically to how, how a dead tree is dealt with. But it's, you know, so there is, there is a component of this that where the, where there is some intervention by the township when someone wants to remove a tree, and we're asking them to do something, take a step to do that, very easily, not requiring much, but particularly if a tree is dead or is in any way dangerous or damaged, people should be able to move on that quickly. Yeah.
Great. Thank you, and thank you again for this, John.
Sure.
This is great, though, you and the whole Shade Tree team.
Yeah, it's a whole team effort, for sure. Thanks, folks.
Thank you again. Okay, and with that, we will move to public comment on matters before the board this evening that we will be voting on, and if you have a comment, please come forward. Just state your name, and you have three minutes.
Adele Cubell Abington. The Minutes highlight the statements of those that agree with Commissioners 100%. The intention of public comment is to allow the cordially invited an opportunity to support Commissioners. The Minutes never. Oh, it's not on. I have to start again. It's already passed, you have to go back because it's already way.
Restart it, and we'll just start from the beginning.
Okay, Adele Cubell Abington. Bullet points concerning the Minutes. The Minutes highlight the statements of those that agree with Commissioners 100%. The intention of public comment is to allow the cordially invited an opportunity to support Commissioners. The Minutes never acknowledge statements concerning the lack of equity or the abusive remarks directed toward uninvited citizens. Uninvited citizens are those that do not agree 100% with Commissioners. A hostile environment has been normalized here. Uninvited citizens are incorrectly quoted in the Minutes, run on sentences with no punctuation, or utilized to destroy the clarity of uninvited citizens' statements. Examples from last month. Mr. Hecker refused to extend seconds to a knowledgeable citizen. In June, a favored citizen lobbyist spoke for over five minutes, and his questions were answered. Mr. Hecker, your tactics have smothered free speech. Why are lawyers that represent citizens against free speech? Why are seconds counted while citizens' concerns go unaddressed? Public comment with no public feedback or questions answered equates to no free speech. Example, on video, Mr. Hecker stated to me, "You're not going to get answers here." I have not gotten any answers for almost half a decade. Mr. Hecker prefers to slam a gavel, call for police, or adjourn instead of answering easy questions. Purposely not serving in the best interest of citizens should put every Commissioner on notice. My efforts have gotten pothole-filled and collapsed, commercial driveways repaved, garbage piles removed, crumbled per, commercial sidewalks repaired, broken benches repaired, open dumpsters closed, and a dump site cleared. Why do Commissioners and the EAC refuse to support these efforts? In July, I uttered, "My God," in exasperation. My voice was barely audible and not picked up by audio. Two small words uttered in a small voice did not require a police call, a recess, and a demand that I leave the room. 12 minutes, 12 million is being spent on parks? Why is Briar Bush not getting any of this funding? Where is 12 million in park improvements going? How can a citizen get a concern on the agenda? These have all been asked before many times. Why is code enforcement prevented from doing their job? There is now an epidemic of broken down cars on lawns and driveways. Homes have back and side yard dangerous amounts of debris piling up. Many homes also have dead trees that should be removed, and they're not. Falling down trees is considered tree removal. On Lamont Avenue, a large tree that was badly neglected fell on a garage, smashing it to smithereens. The garage just sits there on the ground. I don't believe there's any intention of cleaning that site up. In Abington, it's becoming very apparent that you are going to allow no roof on buildings. You are going to allow dump sites to take over. I was told this area, you cannot see it from Welsh Road. You can, on a drive-by, you can see this is somebody's backyard. This is a slum site that I've talked about for a very long time. This house, I do not believe a normal homeowner owns it. I believe a developer owns it. Nobody is paying mortgages and taxes on something that clearly is unsafe to live in.
Mrs. Cubell, your time has expired. Please take your seat. Thank you.
No questions answered.
Is there anyone else that wishes to speak that's here in the room on matters that will be voting on? If so, please come forward.
Hi, everybody. I hope you've had a good summer, and I know some folks are still on vacation. I hope everybody has enjoyed or will enjoy any vacations they have coming up. I'm Joe Rooney, and Mr. Hecker, did you really call me a disruptor?
I didn't.
That's cool. That is cool. Thanks. And I'm talking about the marijuana, medical marijuana thing. So I tried to read through this and tried to understand. There are just a few, a few things I wanted to highlight. In the paperwork, it says, "The Board of Commissioners has determined that the Code of Township Abington Medical Marijuana Dispensary, Medical Marijuana Growers, for the maintenance of peace, good government, health, and welfare of the township and its residents." I don't believe that this has anything to do with the health of the residents or good government. On page 66, this is what I think's kind of funny. You're putting in a medical marijuana grower and medical marijuana dispensary, but there's no exterior sales, no sidewalk sales, no drive-through services. The user cannot be advertised on radio or television, so it's okay, but we want to hide it. I don't understand why we don't just not do it. Then there's, this is for marijuana. There shall be no emission of dust or fumes.
Mr. Rooney, before you go any further, I do want to just clarify.
What? You can continue, stop the clock. You asked why we're, why we are doing this. We're required by the state to pass an ordinance that allow, we are required to do this. So that's why we did this. Okay. Thank you. I'll just continue through this anyway. It, it, it's an oxymoron to me, and maybe this has to go to another level. I'm trying to understand it. That's why I'm reading this stuff. And again, no use of medical marijuana shall be permitted on the premises of a medical marijuana grower facility. And then it talks about, you need to have a, at least a six-foot fence for the protection of public health and safety. So medical marijuana, and we got to protect people from medical marijuana. A fence is a need for the safety of the community. Marijuana is a blight on every community. You can't look at Portland, Seattle, Las Vegas, or anywhere since you've seen what's happened with drug expansion there and say that these places are anything better at all. And then there's no benefits, there's many negatives, it's bad for kids, it's bad for everybody. It's never okay, and it's disappointing. So that's what, that's what I have to say. Thank you.
Thank you. Anyone else wish to speak who's here? If so, please come forward.
Good evening, Commissioners. I just wanted to speak about Agenda Item B under New Business regarding the amendment to the section 1908 of the zoning ordinance.
Can you just say your name, please?
Oh. Stephen Klein.
Nine four. Just for the record, thank you.
Got it. Most people don't want to know that, so. I want to speak in favor of it. I just want to remind everybody that this is, this amendment to this ordinance is to allow own, property owners of legally non-conforming lots to use their property in the same way that those who own conforming lots can use them. Lots need to be in single and separate ownership, and they cannot expand or they cannot look to expand that causes other zoning relief like variances, or else they still have to come to the zoning hearing board. This allows property owners to use, property owners of legally non-conforming lots to use their property in the same way that other residents throughout the township that have conforming lots can use them, and they should not have to have the burden of coming to the zoning hearing board. Thank you.
Thank you. Is there anyone else in the room that wishes to speak? If not, we'll turn to Zoom. I think we have one hand.
Ms. Lehman, your mic is unmuted.
Ms. Lehman, are you there? Try it again.
Okay, can you hear me now?
We hear you multiple times.
Okay, so, yeah, there was no mute button the first time. Or unmute. There was no unmute button. So I, so let me, let me just start by, by saying that, you know, once again, your Zoom digits are buried in the paragraph. 10 years I've been asking you to please change that. I, I'd like to speak also on the issue that Steve Klein just spoke on, and that is, and I want to start by reading you a quote from Charles Blow, a very well-known journalist. He says, "One doesn't have to operate with great malice to do great harm. The absence of empathy and understanding are sufficient." I have tried on this issue again and again to explain to you that this is hurting some people, and while it is helping some people, particularly developers and homeowners that have ample-sized lots, it is hurting people who are the most vulnerable, who live next to tiny strips of land that may be between them and their neighbor. Often, they don't know if this tiny strip of land, which is a non-conforming lot in your view, often half the size of a small building lot, the smallest in the township, sometimes less than half the size of the smallest building lot in the township. You have been told and asked to have empathy and understanding that many times people don't know who belongs to these lots, and the people who live next door to them have spent 20 years caring for them, which effectively makes those lots their own, if they knew about adverse possession, but they don't. They don't, and no one tells them that. So it is necessary to have empathy and understanding and to hear what's being asked. Commissioner Hecker, you said publicly in a meeting that you would get back to me and tell me what is the smallest lot. I emailed you multiple times again and asked you to keep that promise, and you did not. You do harm when you don't have empathy and understanding for the residents that you have put yourself in a position supposedly to serve. So I'm asking you to amend this and not pass it as it is. It needs to be amended such that any lot that is smaller than at least 90 or 95% of a regular building lot in that particular zoning district, and it should not be allowed to get away with not notifying the neighbors and not having a place such as a zoning hearing board where the neighbors can have input. When we had, we had one recently on a property in Willow Grove, and it was a tiny sliver of land between two properties, and one of the properties believed that they owned the land because they were never told when it was sold to them that that was not part of it. They cared for it for all the years they were there, and then someone came along and tried to put a giant house on that property, probably larger than most of the other houses, on the teeniest, tiniest lot in the neighborhood.
Ms. Lehman, I'm going to ask you to conclude your comments.
You're aware of this because I told you about it. So why is there no effort to try and make an accommodation in this amendment for the people that will be harmed by this? Why is there no, can we, can we please put this off and have a conversation of how to protect those people who deserve to have notice, who deserve to know what's going to be smashed right up against their house?
Thank you for your comments, Ms. Lehman. Thank you. I don't think we have anybody else, and so with that, we're going to turn to the consent agenda, and I will turn matters over to Board Vice President Matt Beatty.
Thank you, Mr. President. Move for passage of the consent agenda, listed as Items A through D.
Second. It's been moved and seconded. All those in favor?
Aye.
Aye.
Aye. Any opposed? Aye. Any opposed? The consent agenda is approved. We have no unfinished business this evening, so we'll turn it over to New Business, and I'll be turning this back to Board Vice President Matt Behe. But before I do, Solicitor Clark, so we have two hearings. You just want to go over the ground rules again for everybody. This last time we had two, they were slightly different.
Sure. Well, the first two, we're adopting, potentially adopting three ordinances tonight. The first two are amendments to the zoning code, and therefore, they require a public hearing. So in each of those instances, it would be appropriate for the Board to open the public hearing. Turn it over to me. I will essentially give an outline of what the Board is being asked to consider this evening. You should then ask if there is any public comment on the proposed amendment. After the public comment is concluded, after the Board comment is concluded, it would be appropriate at that time for there to be a motion to adopt or, or not to adopt, or to table the two ordinances. The third ordinance amendment tonight is not part of the zoning code, so that does not require a public hearing.
Thank you, Solicitor Clark. So with that, Vice President Behe, you want to make the motion to open the hearing?
First item, New Business, is BOC dash 05 dash 081425. And I move to opening hearing to consider adoption of ordinance number 2232, amending the Code of the Township of Abington at Part II, General Legislation, Chapter 162, Zoning, at Article II, Definitions, Article 21, Use Regulations, Article 22, Parking and Transportation, and the Conference of Use Matrix to incorporate provisions for the C39 Medical Marijuana Dispensary and D18 Medical Marijuana Grower and Processor Uses.
All right. So is there a second?
Second.
Open hearing. It's been moved and seconded. All those in favor of opening the hearing?
Aye.
Aye.
Aye. Any opposed? The hearing is open. Solicitor Clark, the floor is yours.
So again, Commissioners, this is a medical marijuana ordinance amendment. Medical marijuana is a permitted use in the Commonwealth of Pennsylvania. And as with all permitted uses, if you do not allow for where it will go in specific districts, that means it is allowed in every district. So by not having an ordinance like this, you would basically be saying that every piece of ground in the township could have a medical marijuana dispensary or, or the other aspects of medical marijuana in it. What this does is it limits it to certain districts. The ordinance was advertised at the July meeting. This revision was per the Montgomery County Planning Commission letter to remove the MS Main Street District for dispensaries. Dispensaries will only be permitted in the BC Districts. Grower processors will only be permitted in the SI District. Parking requirements are included for both uses. This is essentially a cleanup amendment to fix some confusion that was created when the new zoning code and the original forms of this amendment were adopted back in 2008 and did not properly align. And again, as I've indicated, this has been reviewed by the Montgomery County Planning Commission, and they have recommended certain changes which we have made. Now, Commissioner Hecker, it would be appropriate of Commissioner Behe to ask if anyone would like to make public comment.
Would anyone like to make public comment? If so, please come forward. Come forward.
Once again, Joe Rooney, I live in Orange Lake, and. Sorry about that. So evidently, I misunderstood part of it, but I did read the ordinance, and the Commissioners do have the ability to prohibit medical marijuana growth, and they have the ability to permit prohibit medical marijuana dispensaries, because there is a two-acre minimum on the medical marijuana grow. There is a prohibition, you have to have at least a six-foot fence, and you could have a higher-than-six-foot fence. So why not make it 25 acres and you can't grow? We don't need a grow pot in this township. And it says, within 1,000 feet of any school, parochial, public school, daycare facility, make it within two miles of any one of those things. I mean, you evidently do have some abilities in this ordinance to write in prohibitions. So just extend them out. We don't need it in our township. We don't want people growing dope in our township. So make it that way. I mean, I don't understand, I don't understand whatever the intricacies. I know you want to do this, and I know the people demand it. It's still bad for the community. It's evidently bad for kids. It's not medical enough that the people who are growing it can use it on their facility, because that's prohibited. It's not good enough. It's not, it's not salutary enough that people in medical marijuana dispensaries are allowed to use it in there. Kids aren't allowed in there without adults. There's all kinds of things that are saying, there's something about this that isn't healthy. So you all are, you all are writing that in, and just make it, just make it more restrictive. That's my request. Thank you.
Thank you. Anyone else wish to speak? There is someone on Zoom with their hand raised.
So, yeah. Okay. So Laura Lehman, and, yeah, I'm concerned about the same thing, about growing marijuana in residential neighborhoods. We have a property, you know, in our neighborhood that is asking for revitalization of the agricultural use. And, and I'd like to know that that's not a possibility, growing marijuana, as it attracts a different element. It is something that kids can get to. And so if we have the ability, as Mr. Rooney just said, to take care of that, let's do that. Okay? Let's not have this be something that is not properly regulated. Thank you.
We have another person that wishes to comment?
Yeah. Okay. My name is Adele Cubell. Joe Rooney is right. There's probably a way where this does not have to happen, that you are not telling us about. You have not done enough with the tobacco stores. We have them on both sides of the street, almost next door to each other in some cases. None of this is family-oriented. None of this makes this a desirable township where people would want to bring economic development, unless, of course, they're interested in creating tenement apartments. We're getting them like crazy. You seem to want them all over. But we don't need this type of thing. We would much rather have garden supply stores, gift shops. We would much rather have running supplies, all kinds of things that people sell, and ceramics, that teach classes, all sorts of things we're missing out on, and you're not doing enough to keep them here even. I know two really beautiful vintage stores closed over at the Keswick, and what replaced them, one was a tobacco shop, and the other was, one that you don't, I think it was for weddings, but you don't necessarily visit it, not a venue where you accept, you know, customers that are coming in. We're ending up with what people won't go out of their way to see or want in their neighborhood. And basically, you're creating a spiraling downhill area that does not look good right from the windows here, yet you complement yourself continuously. Something needs to be done. We don't need the things you're bringing. None of it sounds desirable. Why do you insist on bringing what families would prefer not to see? And why don't you answer one question? Public comment with no questions answered amounts to no free speech.
Hello, Commissioners.
Good evening.
My name's Andrew. I'm a resident of Roslyn. Vanderkleut. V-A-N-D-E-R-K-L-E-U-T. Common spelling. So I originally wasn't going to speak on this, but I feel like the, the public discourse tonight has been very one-sided. So I have, feel like an obligation to stand up and maybe be on the other side, offer a different perspective. I recently grew up in Montgomery County, moved out to Missouri, was there when Missouri passed the legalization of marijuana. Just in the first 12 months, that statewide legalization brought in over 1.4 billion in additional revenue. Additionally, it comes, there is, there is fear of illicit drugs being cut with unknown substances. When we have a substance that is prescribed by a physician, a licensed provider, to come and go to a reputable distributor, we can, we can, we know for sure that, that medication is not cut with anything illicit or could cause any harm. I think while the idea of bringing this is new, and it's new to Pennsylvania, it's new across the nation, but it's a step in the right direction of giving people more autonomy over their own choices, and having that autonomy between themselves and a practicing physician. Thank you.
Thank you. Any additional public comment? Okay.
Mr. Hecker, before the Board votes, I think it would be appropriate for me to just respond to a couple of the comments that were made. First of all, medical marijuana has been legal in the Commonwealth of Pennsylvania for a great many years now. Secondly, the grower processors and the dispensaries are, for the most part, regulated by the Commonwealth of Pennsylvania, the way they have to be set up, the security that has to be at all of these facilities. We are mostly allowed to do zoning. It is only permitted, grower processors are only committed, permitted in the S1, SI District. And with regard to the idea of saying, you got to have a 100-foot fence, and you can only be on 55 acres, unreasonable and excessive requirements would be considered a de facto ban. They would most likely be subject to a validity challenge. And then, once again, if that validity challenge is successful, these dispensaries and the grower processors could go anywhere in the township. So not having this properly regulated, like the Board is doing this evening, would put us at risk. Having unreasonable requirements, as far as dimensional requirements, would also put us at risk for a validity challenge, and would lead to the things happening that are, the residents are actually expressing their concerns about.
Thank you, Solicitor Clark. Are there any comments or questions for members of the Board before we hold a vote? So do we need to take a vote, a vote to close the hearing?
We need to have a motion to approve. You should, yes, you should take a motion to close the hearing.
Okay.
And then there would be, need to be a motion to approve or deny the, the ordinance.
Okay.
I move to closing hearing. Second.
Okay. It's been moved and seconded. All those in favor of closing the hearing?
Aye.
Aye?
Aye.
Any opposed? Hearing's closed.
Mr. President, I make a motion to adopt ordinance number 2232, as previously.
Smart move.
Discuss regarding medical marijuana dispensary and medical marijuana grower/processor.
As I move.
Second.
It's been moved and seconded. All those in favor?
Aye.
Aye.
Aye. Any opposed? Motion carries.
Next item is BOC dash 06 dash 081425. I move to open a hearing to consider the adoption of ordinance number 2234, amending the Code of the Township of Abington at Part II, General Legislation, Chapter 162, Zoning, Article 19, Nonconforming Uses, Structures, Lots and Signs, by amending and restating Section 1908, Expansion of or Construction on Nonconforming Lots, to revise provisions for special exceptions. And I so move.
Second.
It's been moved and seconded. All those in favor of opening the hearing, please say aye.
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 Aye. Any opposed? The hearing is open. Solicitor Clark, the floor is yours.
Thank you. Before the Board this evening is a consideration of an ordinance to amend the zoning code regarding nonconforming lots. This also was authorized for advertisement at the July meeting. This came in as a request from the zoning hearing board that was seeing a high number of requests for relief. Our code currently requires a special exception for any construction on nonconforming lots. Special exceptions are a process that goes before the zoning hearing board. These are permitted uses that go before the zoning hearing board to place any certain criteria on them or any restrictions, but they are a permitted use or on the, on the lot. The section has been revised to remove the special exception requirement, but reinforces that any development on the nonconforming lot must meet all other dimensional requirements. The Montgomery County Planning Commission had no comments on this ordinance. Just back to the last comment about meeting all other dimensional requirements, so you still have to meet setback in height and impervious surface and, and all other restrictions in the zoning code.
Thank you, Solicitor Clark. We'll now open it up for public comment on this matter, if there is any.
I didn't know you got a second chance to talk.
Yeah, there's a glitch in the matrix.
I know, really. You guys really messed up. Stephen Klein, I wanted to comment on, so as a zoning hearing board member, I've been on the zoning hearing board for, I don't know, something like two years, something like that. I think I did the calculation when we sent the original request in. I think we've seen about 18 applications for relief from this section for nonconforming lots. Where they've come in, where that's the only relief they've requested, only relief they requested from 1908, there has never been an application that's been denied, and there's never been anybody come out and speak against those applications. Now, that's not to say there have been applications that included 1908 as a portion of their relief request, and they've requested other variances that have seen, have seen opponents to those applications, mainly because of the variances, not because of the special exception for the nonconforming lot. But anytime we've had an application that just included the nonconforming lot aspect, we've never turned it down. There's never been a reason to turn it down, and we've never seen a protestant against those applications. And I just want to, the applicant, a special exception turns the burden against the, to the protestants, to show how a application is a detriment to the health, safety and welfare of the, of the community, not, whereas in variance, the, the burden is on the applicant. In this case, it's on the protestants. Once again, we've never seen that happen. So these are general, these are basic property rights for these, for residents that own nonconforming lots, and they should have the same property rights as anybody else, and they shouldn't be burdened to have to come in for a special exception. I was part of the zoning ordinance committee that put this in there. I recognize it as part of my not picking this up way back then, and this is the time to correct it. So, thank you.
Thank you. Is there anyone else in the room that wishes to speak to this matter?
It is very obvious.
You need to state your name.
Okay. Adele Cubell, Abington. It is very obvious that you are going to work very hard to give these people an opportunity to build on any kind of situation, small areas, slivers of land. That is very obvious that you want to do that. This will damage some houses. This will lower the standard of living completely. The standard of living in Crestmont is already not too good. When you have this overlooking your neighborhood, it drives down home prices, and you're not doing anything about it. There are multiple homes there that are being destroyed by those working with developers, and you're not doing anything about it. Why would you allow a, a tree to fall in a garage two months ago, and the garage just sits smashed to smithereens right near this? How, you're lowering the value of homeowners in that area, how much they can get for their house. This doesn't help where you live. A smashed garage on the ground doesn't help where you live, and it's very obvious these trees are not being taken care of. The township has ivy twisted around multiple trees throughout the township. It's killing them. You are not making sure dead-as-a-door-nail trees are cut down by homeowners. They, they're all over. I think the Toll family has a dead-as-a-door-nail tree. I believe the Abington Art Center has a very large tree that's dead right there that, near the Connections project. None of the trees have been replaced by the Connections. None of the trees have been replaced by the Connections Project. It looks awful there, spreading blight. More houses are rotting in that direction, so you're gonna put more apartments there. You're allowing people to create horrific situations, and nothing is done if they're important enough. And you can afford to buy some of this land. You're not doing it. You would prefer to create an unlivable Abington township that is overwhelmed with apartments that are high-priced and unaffordable. You are doing it in Crestmont first, it's going to Roslin, it's very easy to see the rot is all over, and beautiful scenic Highland Farms. There's a whole lot of houses rotting, and there's a whole lot of huge trees that fall down that are neglected. I saw one this winter that covered the whole length of a street. The tree was that big. You're letting people neglect their properties if they're important enough to the point where they're creating dangerous situations. That is why the lights and the electric go out all the time. Trees are falling. I drive the street, I saw a tree fall right in front of me. A big branch fell right by the Susquehanna, Washington area, by the, by the bridge, I saw it right in front of me, just fell, didn't take much either. These trees are neglected. The township owns neglected trees. The township needs to get rid of the tree that's dead by the Abington Art Center Connections Project and put the trees that they said they were gonna put there. Valley Road lost 100 trees thanks to Mr. Manfredi's decisions, and none of them have been replaced two years later. When will they be replaced? You will not answer. This is public comment with no questions answered, meaning no free speech.
At the end of that process, the applicant for that property, we have an escrow account, and the trees will be replaced at the end of the construction process, just like they are as part of any land development process. So that's what, this isn't, I'm answering a question, and so I answered it. I'm gonna ask you to take your seat now. Your time has expired. I did. So please take your seat. We now have two residents who wish to speak on Zoom.
I started speaking about this at the, at the meeting, that while I agree that for many properties, this would be appropriate, and it's an unnecessary expense and time expenditure for the residents, but for some residents, and I, and I hope all of you will take this seriously, for some residents, this will do harm. It takes away the requirement on a small lot, like the one on Robinson Avenue, for instance, of notifying the neighbors, the neighbors who often don't know who owns the lot, or what the situation is, or that it's even a building lot. I'm asking you to make the accommodations in a way that it speaks to this problem that will befall these people if you change this ordinance that now protects them. Now you are protecting other people with larger lots, but not protecting people in neighborhoods where there are many of these tiny lots, and they are our most vulnerable population. They need your help. So it can be done if you modify the ordinance and say that the lot must be at least 90 or 95% the size of a normal lot in that district. So the R4 district is required only to have 7,400 square feet. That's already small, and some of these tiny lots are half as small, they're just considered non-conforming lots. And since Mr. Hecker didn't get back to me, I don't have the answers that I need to have today to talk about how small a little strip of land can be and still be considered a building lot. So I had been looking for that answer for months now and been promised it in public. So here we are at the hearing, and we don't have that information, but you can put this off for a month, and you also can make accommodations now and amend this ordinance to allow the benefit that was anticipated, but also to undo the harm that you're about to create, where people who live next door to a little strip of land that they don't know who belongs to it, and if it's a building lot at all, would get notified and have a place where they could speak. There was another situation, and Mr. Klein was involved in it. Mr. Klein has been involved, there is a conflict of interest even.
Ms. Lehman, I'm gonna ask you to conclude your comments.
He was involved in one where two lots were joined together, and they were required, in order to be considered a proper building lot, to be joined together before the application. They were not. They were joined together as part of the application and were not, in effect, building, the building lot that was chosen was not there before. So that was improper even to approve that. And these people did not have enough time to actually consult, get the right answers, understand the laws, and so on.
Thank you for your comments, Ms. Lehman.
Help them, please.
Hi, Ross Abel, can you hear me?
Yes, thank you.
Hi, Ross Abel. I represent Jeep Town Abington Neighbors Association, bike Montgomery County, live on Washington Lane. To me, this one is mostly a no-brainer. Our, the way our towns developed way back when used to be much more organic, and home and landowners had more freedom to develop in a way that was organic for the neighborhood, until zoning code came along and made things much more restricted. So allowing uses of these non-conforming lots, to me, makes a lot of sense. While they sit vacant, to me, that can cause a lot of issues, and land becoming overgrown, and landowners not, not having as much options without seeking relief. So to me, it makes a lot of sense, and I think, I think this is a good thing. Thank you.
Thank you. And I believe that concludes public comment, and so I'll open it up for any comments or questions from members of the board.
I have one.
Yeah. Vice President Behe.
Just want to address the issue with the slivers of land that could be developed. I'm aware of those slivers of lands in my ward in Ward 13. They are no more than 10, 15 feet wide. There's absolutely no way you could build on that while complying with the setback requirements of the ordinance. So that, this, it's really not an issue.
And Commissioner Behe, if I could follow up on what you're saying, I don't know where the impression is that this is only little tiny lots. These are non-conforming lots. A non-conforming lot could mean that your lot is irregularly shaped. A non-conforming lot could mean that you don't have the required frontage on a roadway. There are non-conforming lots in the R1 within the township. There's also seems to be a misunderstanding that this is only to take these little tiny vacant lots and big, build, big, build, big buildings on them. Much of this ordinance is not about vacant lots, it's about making an addition onto an existing lot, or making an alteration on an existing lot. You still have to meet all the other dimensional requirements. We've added that into the ordinance. The only thing we're taking out is the section that says, you gotta go to the zoning hearing board for a special exception. And as Mr. Klein, who's been on the zoning hearing board, has said, there have been 18 of these over the last several years. Residents got notice, not one person ever came out to, to oppose it. That's why the zoning hearing board doesn't feel this is necessary.
Any further comments or questions? Want to make a motion to close the hearing?
I move to close the hearing. Second.
It's been moved and seconded. All those in favor?
Aye.
Aye. Any opposed? Hearing's closed.
I move to adopt ordinance number 2234, as previously stated.
Second.
It's been moved and seconded. All those in favor?
Aye.
Aye. Any opposed? The motion carries. That concludes our hearings, and we can go back to the rest of our new business. And Vice President Behe.
Next item is BOC-07-08-1425. A motion to adopt ordinance number 2233, amending the code of the township of Abington at Part II, General Legislation, Chapter 58, Animals, to add a new article, Article 7, Sale of Dogs and Cats. And I so move.
Second.
It's been moved and seconded. Are there any comments or questions from members of the board? Hearing none. All those in favor?
Aye.
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 Any opposed? The motion carries.
All right. All right. Buckle up, guys. Next item is BOC-08-08-1425. Motion to authorize advertisement of a traffic safety ordinance amending Chapter 156, Vehicles and Traffic, Article 2, Traffic Regulations, Section 14, Stop Intersections, to add stop signs on Fleming Ave, East Northbound and West Southbound at Mount Vernon Ave. And Article 3, Parking Regulations, Section 25, Parking prohibited at all times. No parking between signs, no parking here to corner, parking prohibited except certain hours, no stopping or standing, to add no parking on Old Welsh Road, South Side from Fitzwater Town Road, to the property line between 2914 and 2920. No parking here to corner on Tyson Ave, West Side, 30 feet south from intersection of Hillthorpe Ave and Horace Ave. North Side, 30 feet east of driveway, exit West Side. And no parking between signs on Horace Ave. North Side, in front of the hospital, 20 feet east and 20 feet west of the Marred Crosswalk. And parking for community center, only violations, fined $30. In the Artsley Community Center parking lot, 2828 Spear Avenue. Section 28, Special Purpose Parking Zones. To add the handicap parking at 1013 Maple Ave, 1411 Birchwood Ave, 618 Edghill Road, and 1415 Holman Road. And I so move.
Second.
Second.
I'm sorry. Officer Freed, is there anything else we should put in this agenda at this point?
Yeah, and Matt, I'm getting word that we couldn't hear this at home, so we need to read that again at half speed.
No, thank you. President, President Hecker, I'm sorry, I missed everything after motion authorized. Just recap.
All joking aside, is there, no joking aside. Are there any comments or questions for members of the board? Commissioner Henry.
Yeah, I'll speak to this. I spoke with Officer Freed, and I met with the engineering supervisor, and I met with the neighbors along the area of where Fitzwater Town crosses with Old Welsh. And it is, it does change the situation for parkers there, and it's not, you know, for the most part, folks were a little annoyed about the change of their situation, but recognizing that that area has really seen its hardships recently with different traffic issues and different problems, so it's seen as, as a necessary thing to do. And also, the Fleming meeting Mount Vernon, Mount Vernon is my own street, and the folks around there were really happy to see that become a four-way rather than a two-way. Thank you.
I think we should have had Commissioner Henry read the agenda.
Yeah, she's, she's responsible for most of it.
Thank you, Commissioner Henry. Any further comments or questions? Hearing none. All those in favor?
Aye.
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 Any opposed? The motion carries.
Next item is BOC-09-08-1425. Motion to award the Roslin Fire Company floor replacement bid to Ambient Group LLC in the amount of $72,000, and authorize the township manager to execute the contract. And I so move.
Second.
It's been moved and seconded. Any comments or questions from members of the board? Hearing none. All those in favor?
Aye.
Aye. Any opposed? The motion carries.
Next item, BOC-10-08-1425. Motion to authorize the Public Works Director to execute letters of intent for three chassis refuse trucks. And I so move.
Second.
It's been moved and seconded. Any comments or questions for members of the board? Hearing none. All those in favor?
Aye.
Aye.
Last item of new business is BOC-11-08-1425. Motion to approve identification agreement with Plaza Unit Acquisition LLP and Pavilion Unit Acquisition LP related to drainage releases for the Abington-Junktown Connections Project, subject to review and approval by the township solicitor. And I so move.
It's been moved and seconded. Are there any comments or questions for members of the board? Hearing none. All those in favor?
Aye.
Aye. Any opposed? The motion carries.
That concludes new miss, business tonight, Mr. President.
Thank you, Vice President Behe. It will now turn to the Finance Committee and Finance Committee Chair, Commissioner Stuart Wengrad.
Thank you, President Hecker. The only item up, FC01081425. Motion to approve the June 2025 expenditures in the amount of $3,579,159.95, and salaries and wages in the amount of $2,492,571.21, and authorizing the proper officials to sign and approve invoices and supporting documentation and payment of bills and contracts as they mature through the month of September 2025. And I so move.
Second. It's been moved and seconded. May we have a roll call vote, please?
Commissioners Brodsky, Rothman?
Yes.
De Placido?
Yes.
Laney Martin? Brown? Wengrad?
Yes.
Henry?
Yes.
Depone?
Yes.
Young Gertz?
Yes.
Bigelman?
Yes.
Bull? Schreiber?
Yes.
Bowman? Vice President Behe?
Yes.
President Hecker?
Yes.
Motion passed.
Thank you.
And that concludes Finance Committee agenda items for this evening. Thank you.
Thank you, Commissioner Wengrad. And that concludes the voting section of the meeting. We'll now open it up for general public comment on matters of township business. If you would like to speak, please come forward. You have three minutes.
Adele Cubell, Abington. In 2021, Mr. Manfredi said steps and measures were being taken to address the severe blight that developed under his administration. Four and a half years later, many blight situations remain unaddressed and are festering. The intentions of the Manfredi regime and commissioners was never to repair blight. Neighborhoods the commissioners guaranteed would be preserved are strategically being destroyed. Developers control hundreds of Abington homes that are rotting. It does not matter that the names of others are on the deeds. These rotting homes are owned by developers. 1061 Susquehanna is a depot for construction equipment. Valley Road in Dural has another construction site. 1650 Reservoir is not fit to live in. Families are not paying high taxes and mortgages for destroyed homes for a decade. Developers are. 218 Osceola has trees growing up against the home, severe decay, rotted garage, rotted roof. How is this home considered up to code? Abington has no standards. Average citizens go to court for tiny violations. Their rose bushes might be too large. VIP house rotters never go to court. House rotters, it ta, well, actually, it takes over five years and counting to remove one broken-down car from a lawn. Over five years, and it sits on a lawn. There is an epidemic of broken-down cars on lawns. Multiple broken, broken-down cars and trucks sit on lawns now. Commissioners, the severe rot that you have invited has destroyed the value of area homes. Why are you dead-set against destroying the quality of life in Abington? Tenement apartment developers benefit from the destruction of homes that destroy property values. This planned destruction is unethical. Destroying affordable homes leads to housing insecurity and poverty. Preserving green space costs far less than assisting developers. Selling for, property on Old Jerk Road is selling for under $600,000. Purchasing green space would stop the dangerous congestion and lift the sagging standard of livid, of living made because of your decisions. Large properties on Old Jerk can be bought for less than the $1,000,500 paid to Richard Manfredi and Karen Sanchez's law firm, for no economic development. Economic development that prioritize one, prioritizes one percenters has left Abington with rot, slum commercial areas, and rising taxes.
Please conclude your comments, Ms. Cubell. Your time has expired.
Why is this area, 1582 Edghill Apartment Area, still rotting almost five years later, and it looks way worse? The cement is all over the place on Old Jerk Road. Big blocks of cement from the sidewalk sit on Old Jerk Road. Nothing has been done. You get, you were gonna find them a grant, it didn't go through, it seems. They went to court, you won a judgment, you didn't follow through with that.
All right.
Nothing is being done. You are allowing decay Nothing is being done. You are allowing decay to take over this area. Of course, you're creating slums.
Is there anyone else that wishes to speak? If so, please come forward.
Good evening, Commissioners. My name's Matthew Step. I live in Washington Lane, and Mr. Hecker is my commissioner. It's my understanding that the township is working to finish its next budget sometime for later this year. And I'm here, and I know there's many priorities for funding in the township, but I'm urging the Commissioners to invest in the Briar Bush Nature Center. As a father, I can attest to Briar Bush being one of the crown jewels of Abington. My eldest daughter, my year-old Amelia, is in the fourth row. She may or may not be sleeping, but she is available to talk to all of you about her time at summer camp and all the events that she's, that she, that she goes to on a regular basis. She's a much better advocate for Briar Bush than I am to a lot of ways. But what's really special about Briar Bush is that it's not only taught my, both my girls about wildlife and nature, it's helped instill a love for that nature, and they're now involved in Girl Scouts. They love going hiking. They love birding. It's a really special place, and it's been a privilege to have Briar Bush in Abington and as an important community anchor, but it's in need of more support from the township. While the number of visitors is higher today than ever before, including before the pandemic, the township is actually investing less money in Briar Bush than it did before the pandemic. So its camps are becoming oversubscribed, its staff are over capacity. I know they have less staff today than they did prior to the pandemic as well. So I hope the Commissioners, as they work on the budget, support Briar Bush with a higher budget, hopefully for more staff, so that it can keep growing as one of those special places in Abington for not only my family but others, and I thank you for the time tonight.
Thank you. Appreciate your advocacy. Please come forward.
Good evening. My name's Leah Delavecchia. I'm actually not an Abington Township resident. Just came here for a fun night. No. I'm not an Abington Township resident, but I am proud to serve as the president of the Board of Directors of Briar Bush, of the Friends of Briar Bush. I wanted to take a couple of minutes to talk about something important to the Nature Center and to the community. Briar Bush Nature Center is truly a special place, a community treasure that has thrived for decades because of a strong and unique partnership between the township and the Friends. For nearly thirty years, this partnership included a shared full-time business manager position. As I'm sure you're aware, this position was eliminated during the pandemic in twenty twenty. Now, as Matthew said, Briar Bush is serving more people than ever before. In twenty twenty-four alone, our programs reached about three thousand more participants than in twenty nineteen. This growth is wonderful, but it does come at a cost. Without a business manager, our director, development manager, and program director have absorbed the essential administrative tasks previously performed by the business manager. This means there is less time for strategic work for fundraising, facilities planning, and program development that fuels Briar Bush's long-term success, as well as less time for educators to deliver programs to constituents. As proven through the years through shared programming and resources, and recently with the twenty twenty-five purchase of a van that was donated to the township to be used for programs, the Friends of Briar Bush is committed to this longstanding tenure of this partnership. In the coming months, Briar Bush Nature Center will submit a budget that includes the addition of partial compensation for the business manager position. As in the past, our proposal for this reinstated position will include the same salary breakdown where the Friends of Briar Bush cover fifty percent of the position's salary, with the township covering the remaining fifty percent plus benefits. I hope, when budget discussions come around, you'll think of Briar Bush as a community treasure it is and see this position as an investment in the future. Thank you for allowing me to share my thoughts and for your ongoing support of Briar Bush Nature Center.
Thank you. Is anyone else that wishes to speak? Please come forward.
Hi, Joe Rooney. Kind of hodgepodge of short things. First, tomorrow's August fifteenth, and I'm sure everybody knows it's a feast to the assumption, but it's also the eightieth anniversary of V G A Day when I was a kid, or the end of World War II. So we all owe everything to the people who fought, died, supported everybody in World War II. So just to remind people of that, make a mem- just to stop down at the war memorial, it'd be worth it to take a look at the names on those plaques or say a prayer for the people. There probably aren't, there are probably a couple of World War II veterans left, but I don't know how many of them, and I'm sorry we don't have a little memorial for it, but that's the eightieth anniversary of V G A Day. The second one is, I want to support Adele. She could work on her presentation sometimes. Her heart is completely in the right place. The stuff she brings up is good and it's important. And I think if we just answered the questions that she gave out and provide some little timeline of what's going on, that would really help the process a little bit. A third one I wanted to say, I read the minutes of the last meeting. I want to tell you that ICE is always welcome in Abington Township. They're doing an essential job. On the Fourth of July, we honored our first responders and our law enforcement agents. And Immigration and Customs are the first responders and the law enforcement that are protecting the boundaries and borders of the United States, and I thank them for what they're doing every single day. If you're an illegal alien and you're in Abington Township, it's time to go home. Come here legally. We welcome you with open arms, and that's got to be our policy. The next thing is, the Economic Development Corporation, I went to the meeting, a minute and a half, in June, in July, and it started twenty minutes late, and there was just endless chatter on vacations and people on cruises and stuff like that. It was really disappointing. So I did a write-to-know request, and I'm just trying to figure out what's going on, because from what I understand, the E C D is going to have six hundred thousand dollars of our taxpayer money. And there was no contract for Mr. Manfredi when he was the director. There's no contract so far. I did a write-to-know request for the new director of it. And the money's gone, twelve hundred bucks to CPA firm, then thirty-one thousand plus to Delta Development Corporation. They're small, but Mr. Manfredi's gotten fourteen thousand dollars out of that, and Obermeyer, the lawyers, have gotten twenty-five thousand dollars. It really sounds like a slush fund for law firms, for people who are going to be, we're going to be, uh, they're going to be giving advice, like Mr. Manfredi formed, after he formed the E D C, now he's got a business that's advising the Economic Development Corporation. How are we making sure we're protecting the six hundred thousand dollars? And it's just not there where a lawyer firm goes, oh, whoa, we've got another forty thousand we can grab. And I'm just, I'm asking that question because I didn't get a lot of warm feelings from the meeting in July. Thank you. And have a good summer.
I think there was one other gentleman that wanted to speak. Yeah, please, there's more than one, but please come forward.
Good evening to the Board of Commissioners. My name is Dennis Efimov, and I am a Abington Township resident. Last month, I was very excited to attend my first Board of Commissioners meeting and speak for the first time on an issue that was very important to me. I'm now returning because, with more urgency and more consideration, and I want to once again urge the Board of Commissioners to consider passing a welcoming ordinance for Abington Township. If the Board will indulge me, would you be willing to, by show of hands, show me how many were not born in this country?
Yeah, just address your comments. We're not going to do that, so just go ahead.
For those who weren't at the last meeting, I was not born in this country. I am an immigrant. I grew up in Abington Township, and I understand that Abington Township cares significantly about its immigrant communities, and that's all the more reason why I'm saying now is the time to pass this policy. I do understand that the Board has some reservations about a welcoming ordinance, and I also understand that Chief Malloy has instituted some of these policies for the Police Department. I strongly consider that these policies are not sufficient. The Police Department is one small section of Abington Township. Abington Township is a large township with hundreds and hundreds, hundreds and hundreds of employees. I would know because I am one of them. I work for our Parks and Rec Department. I am a township employee. I would be pursuant to this policy, and I'm speaking out of that concern that it is such, it is very important for us to pass this policy. At such a dark hour in this country for our vulnerable communities, it's time for the township to take an explicit and affirmative stance in support of immigrant communities. It is not the job of the Abington Township Police Department or any employee to be, like, enforcing federal immigration laws. That is the job of federal officers. I would like our township to focus on protecting our communities, and that does not involve, you know, responding to non judicial warrants that aren't enforceable and aren't legal. I know that Abington Township cares significantly about its immigrant communities. I would know because I grew up here and I was one. But having kindness and empathy will only get you so far. You also need to have the strength and courage to act on it. I once again want to strongly encourage the Board to consider the policies that have been sent to each one of you, and I would really love to work together with the Board on this. I will, I know that there is an executive session at the conclusion of this meeting. I will be waiting in the lobby up to an hour after this public session ends in the hopes of speaking to you to assuage any concerns you might have. I'm confident that I could do so. So please, 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 if you have concerns, reach out to me, and I'd be happy to speak about it. Thank you.
Thank you. Come on.
Hello, my name's Joe Dunn.
Could you say anything? I didn't hear you.
Joe, Joseph Dunn.
Thank you.
Yeah, I live in Ward Ford, Jimmy's Ward. And I have a growing concern. We have an app, and it shows the crime hits in our area, and every day, there's something. It seems like the crime is just coming right up Oxford Avenue and heading right into, into our ward and then into Abington. And I think it really needs to be paid attention to. It seems to be increasing. So I know I have the most respect for our chief and the job they do, but I just think it needs to be said publicly because it's, it's a big, big deal. And the crime you see right down there at Philly at Five Points, and I'm sure Jimmy's aware of it, it just creeps up right into McKinley. Like, we have to pay attention to that, so whatever. Anything I can do to raise that point, I appreciate it. And also, I really believe we should back our ICE agents, the police force, anyone to help with, with the crime. And as far as illegal aliens, I, I think it's great. Like, everyone has come to the country from other countries. There's a legal way to do it, and there's an illegal way. The illegal way is illegal, so back our ICE agents and our police. Thank you.
Hello, my name is Ryan Taitman. I live in Abington, Abington Township in Glen Side. I'm here also to speak in favor of the welcoming ordinance that was proposed by Rabbi Elise Rechterman. I'd also like to take a minute to thank the Commissioners. I know several of you have spoken about this to me personally, and I appreciate you taking the time to talk with me about it. I think many of us are very concerned about the conduct of ICE throughout the country. The arrest and detainment of undocumented immigrants, as well as many immigrants with legal status, as well as sometimes even United States citizens. I know probably all of you are aware of what happened in West Norrton at the grocery store. There, twenty-three people were detained, seventeen were arrested, both employees and customers at the store, and none of them had criminal records. And I think you have the opportunity to take definitive action to provide an additional measure of safety to immigrant members of our community. So I urge you to add this ordinance to your September agenda and have a robust discussion about it. And I thank you very much for the time you've taken to discuss it already. Thank you.
Thank you. Do you want to come forward, sir? You've been, you've been waiting patiently.
Good evening, ladies and gentlemen. My name is Harold Warren Gans. I live at fourteen thirty-six Osborne Avenue in Roslyn, this is Henry's Ward. I'm a professional engineer who has been in municipal work for the last fifty-two years. My last assignment was Ben Salem Township in Bucks County, one of the largest townships in Bucks County. I have extensive experience in municipal work. But I have a very urgent situation that needs to be addressed as soon as possible. The, I'm talking about the intersection of Woodland and Eastern Roads, where a auto zone was recently constructed. There was a curb radius installed that does not comply with any regulation. It is much too small for the heavy right turn from Woodland to Eastern. As a result of that tight radius, trucks and cars go over the curb to make the right turn, and trucks go over the handicap accessible ramp, directly over the, the rubber portion where the, the handicapped persons are supposed to stand and, or sit and wait for their turn to cross the street. The tire tracks go right over that plate. This is a very dangerous situation, waiting, an accident or worse, waiting to happen for the first person that hits one of these, is hit by one of these large trucks crossing that curb. I urge you immediately to block off that ramp so no future residents use it until such time as that intersection is properly constructed with proper radiuses and proper handicap accessible ramps. That, that is my statement, but I see I still have a little time, so I'll ask a question which I understand is not able to be answered tonight. The county went through the Eastern Road area and the same area and put in sixty-three new or replacement handicap accessible ramps recently. I assume they were put in to meet the current ADA standards. This worst ramp in the entire stretch from Susquehanna Road to the mall was not done. I want to know why it was not done. That is my question. Thank you very much.
Thank you.
Can you name again?
Yes, just for this.
Stephen Klein. So I just want to mention that I think at some point, all of us were illegal immigrants, and I also wanted to mention that these illegal immigrant tropes that are thrown out are just a reason to give you somebody to blame for the things that you believe are going wrong in this country. They should look within. Thank you.
Come forward, sir. Take your time.
Good night. My name's Joe Monahan. I live on fourteen forty-two Edgill Road. We have a house there on fourteen fifty. It's been not occupied for a year now. I contacted Mr. Spiegelman about it. The foundation's not even there. I mean, it's funny. I mean, we had pictures taken of it. The owner has left a truck there behind, basically with flat tires, and he had six stones stored inside there. So it's kind of an overgrown. I ask the township to come by once in a while. They cut the grass. I mean, pretty soon something's called Briar Bush East. I mean, that's getting so bad back there, so. I don't know what the township could do about it, or, you know, they looked into it or not. Again, I've talked to Mr. Spiegelman about this, so.
Go ahead.
Yeah, he picked his job.
No, Joe, thank you so much for coming out about this. Yeah, I mean, as we discussed, it's go- I'm sorry about the feedback. That property's going up for sheriff's sale on the twenty-eighth, and I, I'm in regular contact with, with Fire Marshal Chris Platts and his whole, his whole code and property maintenance team about this. I mean, I, you know, well, you know, I was there. I took, you and I both taken pictures of it, and I know it is, you've been living next to this thing for a long time, and it's, yeah, it's, it's hideous. So once, once it's sold, which is in, you know, actually, sorry, two weeks, two weeks from tonight, two weeks from today, I'm, you know, the first thing I'm doing is going, is going to be to call Chris, and we're, you know, we're going to get, we got to get this thing figured out. That house is absolutely unacceptable. You're completely right.
Yeah, because I feel bad for the people next door. I mean, I'm two doors down.
No, yeah, you have, but I mean, you're practically next door.
Really, I'm still saying, I mean, people come by all the time, say, what's going on there? You know, there's no siding on it, and if you go at the foundation, it's not even there half the time. It's all, you know, broken apart, and the whole backyard is just one big wooded area. I mean, I have fox back there. I got brown hogs. It's like, you know, again, it's Briar Bush East going on there right now.
I, when I talked to the guys when they were mowing the lawn, the one guy talked about how he- the, the one guy talked about how he, you know, he found a snake, and then I left because you know about me and snakes. No, we're, I'm, I'm gonna stay on this. I, I mean, I thank you for your patience. It's, it, something absolutely must be done about it, and it, come hell or high water, it will. Thank you for coming out, Joe. I really appreciate it.
Thank you, people.
Thank you for your comments.
Always a good neighbor.
You are in good hands with Commissioner Spiegelman. Okay, I think we'll, did you want to speak, sir? Please come forward.
Good evening again, Commissioners. This is the real reason I came here.
Could you just state your name again for this portion?
My name is Andrew.
Thank you.
Andrew Vanderklut. I am a resident of Roslyn, and I'm here to ask you to considering adopting a Welcome Act for Abington Township, an Abington ordinance that affirms we are a community where everyone belongs and feels safe to participate in civic life. We've seen right here in Montgomery County that welcoming policies are not abstract ideals. They are practical tools for public safety and community cohesion. In June, the county adopted a policy requiring a judicial warrant before any county employee can share personal information with ICE. They made it clear that county workers are not federal immigrant agents, and our local resources should serve local needs. A township-level welcome ordinance would take that principle a step further, making it permanent, consistent, and if paired with proactive outreach, it would mean no one is questioned about their immigrant status unless required by law. No cooperation with ICE without a judicial warrant, protecting due process and limiting liability. No data collection on immigrant status unless it's legally mandated. So why does this matter? First is public safety. When residents fear that a call to police, a visit to the local library, or showing up at a township meeting could put them at risk of deportation, they remain silent. Crimes go unreported, witnesses disappear, and the trust that keeps the community safe erodes. A Welcome Act builds trust, making everyone more willing to engage with local services. Second, economic and cultural vitality. Immigrant and newcomer families start businesses, buy homes, contribute to the local economy. When they feel connected from day one, they invest here for a long time. A welcoming ordinance is a message to prospective residents and businesses. Abington is a place where you can put down roots. Third, consistency and accountability. County policies can change with leadership, but an ordinance in Abington's books makes our values clear and lasting, providing guidance to employees, reassurance to residents, and transparency for everyone. Commissioners, this is about, this is about more than immigration. It's about who we are as a township. It's about ensuring that our laws reflect our values, fairness, safety, and opportunity for all. By adopting a welcoming act, a Welcome Act, Abington can lead by example, showing that strong communities aren't built by fear, but by trust, connection, and shared responsibility. I would like to add, I have worked in healthcare for 15 years now in the emergency setting. The biggest lesson that I have learned from my time interacting with the people from, who are unhoused to the very privileged, we all want the same core things, a good, happy, and secure life. Thank you for your time and for considering this step towards a stronger, safer, and welcoming Abington.
Thank you. And with that, we will turn to Zoom. Oh, you, I'm, go ahead, sorry. Please come forward.
Good evening.
Hi, good evening. My name's Nick Harmon. I live on 101 Washington Lane. I live in Commissioner Weingrad's Ward. I'm also here to voice my support for the welcoming ordinance. I know this is something that's been discussed already, and it's something that I want to implore the importance of, considering that every single day that we don't have something concrete in place is another day that the community goes unsafe, the community goes afraid, because at any moment, our immigrant community could be disappeared without any forewarning. Personally, I'm a fan of statistics, and as of the 2023 National Survey, there was reported to be about 9.2% of our township is actually comprised of immigrants, whether it be naturalized citizens or non-citizens, which puts about 5,400 people in our community that are constantly at risk every single day that we don't have a welcoming ordinance in place. The one, one of the concerns I've heard from the Board in regards to the welcoming ordinance is the fear of reprisal from the federal government. The only actual evidence of this happening in the first place that I've, that I've seen is the University of Pennsylvania in that situation, which has no bearing on either ICE or immigration as a whole. So unless there is any other example that I'm not aware of, there's no, there's no precedence for the federal government stepping in and getting involved in this. Furthermore, I'm aware that the, our Chief of Police also has stated that the, our Township Police will not cooperate with ICE. I do not believe this is sufficient. I believe we need something that is actually in writing, something that's concrete, and something that also includes the Township employees as a part of that ordinance, just to make sure that our Township employees remain Township employees, and they're no, they're not doing the work of the federal government. Thank you.
Thank you.
Good evening, everyone.
Evening.
My name is Bernard Epstein. I live at 1421 Autumn Road in Riddell. Commissioner Weingrad is my commissioner. I want to thank you, Mr. Weingrad, for taking so much time over the past couple of weeks to talk with me, taking time away from your family just to have conversations. You listened well, you asked good questions. I want to thank Mr. Rothman for responding to my emails and calls, acknowledging them. Thank you very much. I'm here also to request once again to consider, that you consider passing a welcoming ordinance to protect our immigrant communities here in Abington. And I don't want to go over what other people have already gone over, so I just want to share some things related to concerns I've heard Commissioners share. Excuse me. Regarding the concern about withholding funding, I want to point to some recent rulings at the federal level that actually are really good news. In April of 20, excuse me, in April, a federal judge in District Court of Northern California, Judge Oric, ruled against Trump administrations throughout lawsuits against 15 counties in California that passed welcoming ordinances and made it clear in his decision that they could not, funding could not be withheld, right, as a result of counties and municipalities engaging in legal noncooperation. But that was an end around, essentially around the 10th Amendment. More recently, in July of 2025, right, Judge Aileen Jenkins of the Northern District Court of Illinois threw out a, a case against Chicago and Illinois brought by the feds, citing again, this is an end around, around the 10th Amendment. A case that was brought by the Trump administration suggesting that legal noncooperation was unconstitutional. So good things and good news for those of us who were scared about having funding withheld. And I want to mention, too, there was an amendment to the case that the federal Judge Oric in the District Court of Northern California ruled on. It was an amendment in six, actually, June 23rd of this year, saying that funding could not be withheld, including funds for new federal awards. So something really important to take in when we think about genuine fears, I think we all share about having funding withheld from our township because of really us attempting to codify kindness. And I know that sounds perhaps a little wishy-washy, codifying kindness, but as someone who is a licensed clinical social worker and trained to treat psychological trauma, who's worked in Philadelphia, Montgomery Counties for years and years with families, including families who have members who are undocumented, who have individual identification, tax identification numbers, who pay taxes, payroll taxes, and other taxes, I can tell you, I've stared into their faces and, and heard their pain even before this, even well before this moment in time, the fear of being deported, of being unjustly detained, and spirited off. So I just, I wanted to speak to these issues in particular, and the last thing I'll say is that, according to ICE's own reports released in June, 65% from October 1st of 2024 through June 14th of 2025, 65% of the people apprehended and detained were not convicted of any crimes. 93% of people, right, were not convicted, 93% were not convicted of a violent crime or property damage. Right? So these, the people who are being rounded up were showing, these hairdressers, house cleaners, farm workers, laborers, people who are contributing, right, and doing good work. Of 11 million undocumented immigrants, right, the Center for Tax Policy says that 5.4 million have individual tax identification numbers, which means they're paying and they're doing their part in terms of giving back, and they're not getting benefits from us. They're not getting Social Security, they're not getting Medicaid, right? So I just want to be clear, dispel any myths that are out there. I want to thank you all for your time and for considering this.
Thank you. With that, we will turn to Zoom.
Laura Layman from Meadowbrook. So I want to, I barely know where to start because, no, that has to go out of the room. Okay. I barely know where to start because there, there were so many things that came up. The first one, again, can we please have the Zoom digits up the top in a bullet point? The second one, Mr. Clark did not even listen to what I was saying, or he misunderstood it, or he purposely wanted to twist it to make it look like I didn't know what I was talking about. All three of those have been seen before. So, Mr. Clark, I did not have any misconceived notions here that all of the properties were tiny slivers of land or any such thing, or it was only about building large properties on small. I, I initially, in my opening remarks, said that there are many properties for which this is a good thing. Those were not the ones I was talking about. The tiny slivers of land are, and I've described the conditions to you many times. They are of great concern because the people who have them next to them will have a house practically in their bedroom. And so it's really important that you care, have empathy, and be concerned. And if not, that you, whoever doesn't want to do that, gets out of public service because public service is about caring about the residents that you're doing something for. And Commissioner Klein did have a conflict of interest. He, he was actually working with clients who own a number of these small lots, and he's worked on two of them now, one of them that was done illegally. And he knows it was. In fact, two of them that were done illegally, and he knows that they are. And the fact that I can't get a conversation and that you wouldn't acknowledge that the map was wrong, in fact, what you did is change the map instead of addressing my concern that the map did not reflect what was being applied for, that's a great concern. The residents in this township, I think all of you know, want to be able to ask a question and get a fair answer. And the fact that you don't do that means you are not serving the residents. And in this particular case, we have people in the township, just tonight even, that, you know, shamefully, for you, not for them, shamefully, are under the impression that they could not get an answer tonight, but they should be able to. And we used to be able to, Commissioner Hacker, before you were in charge. So we would like to see if you are not interested in doing what helps the people, that you step down and let somebody in who will. The EDC, as Mr. Rooney.
Ms. Cabell, you're, I mean, Ms. Layman, your time has expired. Thank you for your comments. We'll go to the next resident. It's the third month in a row I've done that.
Good evening. My name's Ross Abel on Washington Lane. I'll try to make this pretty quick. I know there's a lot of, a lot of comments tonight, and we're going pretty long. Thank you all for, for taking the time out of your night. I also support a welcoming act as our immigrant residents are a critical part of us having a vibrant, diverse community. So, so also count my support for that. Separately, we've all spoken previously about a systematic approach to traffic calming. I heard a policy was being drafted, but months have passed with no update. In that time, cut through speeding and aggressive driving have only gotten worse. Every day, I watch families dart across streets as drivers barrel through and seeing parents clutch their kids' hands a little tighter near school crosswalks. The danger isn't abstract, it's right here. Every morning and afternoon, on the same streets our kids take to get to school. On my own small residential block in Washington Lane, the traffic survey found drivers going in the 50s and 60s sometimes, but it's not enough to merit any changes, and as residents and parents were extremely frustrated by the danger to our children. We can do better. I'm asking the Township to form a citizen Township Traffic Calming Commission so we can identify and fix problem spots together, not piecemeal. Create mandatory traffic calming zones around every school, slow speeds, safer crossings, and designs that make reckless driving impossible. Partner with adjacent towns, Montco and PennDOT, to pursue traffic calming on Old York Road. Far too many pedestrians have been killed or injured, and there is something we can do. It's not out of our hands. Finally, let's commit to an active transportation strategy. As Cheltenham has recently done to coordinate improvements for walking, biking, and trails, this isn't just about convenience, it's about saving lives, protecting kids, and making our neighborhoods more livable. The clock's ticking, and every month without action is a month where someone could get hurt or killed. We have the tools, we have the examples, and we have the responsibility. Let's make the commitment tonight. Thank you.
Thank you. And with that, we will adjourn. We will take a five-minute break, and we will then reconvene for the working session. Thank you.